We're just gonna quickly show you the challenge you'll be doing in a minute. You have to stretch the rubber band to pick up the cups. And then, the goal is to make a pyramid of cups with all of the cups that are on the table. So we expect everyone to be able to do this in their small group as fast as possible.
Dangerous. Every idea makes. It's big.
Okay, at this time, we challenge you to work at a table. The students will help you. Oh, look at this room. Are you cheering them off, though? Yeah, good job. Way to...
Oh, brought one, I guess. There we go. That little house, I like. A little cheatin', eh? I'm gonna get him cheatin'.
After a three-day challenge, we like to think about what we learned with emoji. So order emoji that shows how you felt about this activity. And what had you filled up? That's mean how did you feel this? Even if something wasn't working the way you wanted to. Before we say goodnight, can you act out your emoji face for us? And say it.
For more information on our STEAM day, check out the Pots Grove School District video page. There is a video that highlights a whole bunch of student interactions and teacher perspectives from the STEAM day. If you haven't done so already, please be sure to check out the video page on our website.
Thank you very much.
Normally, I leave these kind of meetings to Mrs. Grimm, because she's so much more eloquent than I am. But I'll give it my best shot tonight, because it's a subject near and dear to my heart. First of all, I thought the holiday season was over and it was no more Festivus and no more feats of strength. So I was misinformed. I have my calculator here, I have my pen here, but coordination is just not my thing. So, thank you for that. And I would like to say, this is the kind of excitement, this is the kind of innovation, this is the kind of attitude that we love seeing amongst our staff and the teachers here. And we really, really, really are proud of everybody that has anything to do with this, to be involved with it. Because you can see, looking at the children, that they're excited about learning, they're excited about education. They're happy to come to school and do that thing. And if you have three a year and you spread them out, you can spread it out all year long. And I just applaud you for that. The other thing I'd like to say is that sometimes, you know, we look at all the... You know, we have a list of conferences and we approve them and we hope to hear back from somebody maybe in the future. And we rarely do, or I rarely do. And here we have, we can see how this conference paid off and what were... It was appreciated, it was grabbed onto, and made the most of. So, thank you for that, and thank everybody very much for this great demonstration and for really, really educating our kids. Thank you all so much. You can skip over this next one if you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. I don't want to skip over the next one. Those of you who are part of the district administratively and with our faculty, we have concentrated this year with the theme of 212, giving an extra degree. And we've worked that through our faculty and our staffs, and really trying to stress the importance of what a little extra effort going into a particular event, or a little extra effort with an assignment, or a little extra effort with someone that you know, taking another act of kindness with somebody, it's very important. So, tonight before you, you have your official 212 mug, giving the extra degree. And as board members, we all know you give a lot of extra time and effort to the school district. So we just wanted to basically say thank you from the administration, all that you do for the district. And I, you know, I say this with all sincerity, it's a team approach. It's not about me, it's not about us, it's about the organization and what we do together. And I think that 212 really exemplifies that piece. So again, thank you for your time, thank you for your efforts, and continue to give the extra degree. Thank you very much. I am going to continue with Section 5, Approval of the Minutes. Recommendation to approve the annual board reorg meeting that was held on December 4th. Make your motion to approve all Item 5 for approval of minutes. We have a motion in three seconds to approve the minutes for the two meetings. Does anybody have any questions on them? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. So, without objection.
I'll be sitting in for Mrs. Grimm tonight with the treasurer's motions. First item on the docket is a request for a motion to accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and the cafeteria accounts as presented.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any questions on receiving the accounts? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. So, without objection.
Thank you. The next motion I would like is to ratify the payment of invoices in the amount of $5,83,101.68 for November 2018 as presented.
Like to make a motion to combine November and December? We have a motion in two seconds. As a matter of fact, any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. So, without objection, on to the treasurer's report.
And finally, we'd like a motion to approve the treasurer's reports for November and December 2018 as presented, and file them for audit.
Pick one. Okay, we have a motion over here. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, two seconds again. So, are there any questions? No questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. Very good. Okay, moving on to the report of the superintendent and our student board reps. Please make your reports.
First, we're gonna start off with, last month before break, the high school had its first Falcon feedback meeting with Dr. Ziegler and Mr. Dany. The students were asked the same questions as we ask all the students that we visit. What does Pots Grove do great? What can Pots Grove do better? And what do you dream Pots Grove can be? For the first question, the students love carrying backpacks, like every single one of them. And they also commented on the guidance department, all of the options we have for Pride B, and how fun gym class is, and expressed how great it was to have such helpful teachers. In response to the second question, the students said that they would like to spend more time in their Pride B clubs, because every time we seem to have Pride B, we miss it. Because we do like Pride B one week and then Pride A scheduled, like it's like a set schedule for the whole year. And every time we seem to miss Pride B, so everyone just wishes that we have more time with those clubs. They also noted that they dislike the E-Hall Pass system that we have, but it just started that week, so I think people were just complaining that it was something new and they were used to what we had. But now, it seems like it runs pretty smoothly. They also want to reopen the school store and the cafeteria all day, so if someone is hungry and have to wait till sea lunch in the morning, they have an option to go grab a snack or something. And thought it would be great to be able to request books for the library to stock, like Ask Miss Small to bring, to buy books that could be available in our library. And some of the students' dreams for the school include having more collaborative classrooms, more pep rallies, have a senior presentation instead of having a senior paper, and being able to do that project on whatever they wanted and not being limited to like certain books and stuff. This Friday, January 11th, we will be hosting a gathering with student board representatives from Springford and Pottstown over at the high school. It goes from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30, and will consist of breakfast and communicating with the other students about ideas for reports, our responsibilities, our role at board meetings, our highlights, ideas that we may have had or had about things that we can do for our districts and the challenges that we face in this position. It'll be a great chance for us to learn and connect, and we're grateful to have the opportunity. We also have plans to visit West Pots Grove Elementary this month to talk to students about their ideas for their school, as well as make up our trips to Lower Enring Rock.
Couple of questions. Could you explain a little bit how the E-Hall Pass system works? And also, Part B is, can you... What type of follow-up is planned? I love surveys, but I love just as much hearing about the follow-up with the administration from what the students share.
The E-Hall All Pass, it's just, we go on our computers, we have like a website and we have like an account. So, if we have to go to the bathroom in the middle of class or something, we just fill out a pass. So we say where we are and where we plan on going. And then the teacher has to approve the pass on the laptops for us to leave. And then, when we get back, the teacher like stops it. So it like times how long we're gone and that type of stuff. And we also use it for, if like we're in study hall and we want to go to the library or to another teacher for service learning or something, we have to fill out the pass for... To go where we are and the place where we're going has to approve it to say that we got there. And teachers can make like appointment passes for us. So if a certain teacher wants us to go somewhere during a study hall or something like that, they can put it on your account so that you... The teacher you are at knows where you're planning on going.
To that if I can. So if you need to use a restroom, you have to... If you don't have it open already, you have to open up your laptop, open up that app. have to open up your laptop, open up that app, fill it out, somehow signal to the teacher, who then checks it or whatever, and then you go?
Yes.
Are you finding that that's less time-consuming or more time-consuming in taking away from your studies?
It actually goes a lot smoother than you'd think it would, like, kids are pretty good about like just getting out their laptops and like if, most of the time, if the student just raises their hand and like, like just signals to the door, the teacher just goes right to the laptop to approve whatever pass they ask for, whether it's a nurse, bathroom, whatever, locker, if they need something. At the beginning, it was kind of annoying, but now kids are used to it and just kind, it flows really, really easily.
I think anytime you offer a teenager the answer to have less communication, they're going to take it, so I'm pretty sure it's going to catch on.
I did a question for the collaborative classroom. Was there any input as far as like what they wanted to, students would like to see to make it more collaborative, or?
I think there's specific classes in the high school where it's a lot of listening and a lot of, you know, writing notes and taking in knowledge, but not exactly communicating about the knowledge, it's, this is the information, remember it. So instead of, you know, listening to a lecture per se, I think students are looking for more, okay, so this is what we're studying right now, talk to your friends about it, talk to your classmates, what do you think about it? Tell me what you think about it and we'll discuss it, rather than, this is what you need to know.
So a number of students felt that the teachers don't really include any sort of discussion in the classroom?
In some, in some classes, yes.
In some classes.
And it's even as simple as just, instead of having the desks like in rows, like being able to sit like at a table or something, just to be able to discuss what we're talking about, because it's, I think students just feel like they learn better when they're able to discuss what they just heard, instead of just having to remember it or read it off their paper on their notes.
I mean, that makes, makes sense to me, so.
So the survey results, is that going to be reviewed with the administration, or has it, and what type of follow-up is going to happen with that?
We have been talking to Dr. Ziegler about things that the students said. For example, Pride B, we were already discussing different options for how we can get together with our groups more often. Idea that we liked was, we use Pride A to watch Harbor videos, which are, which are helpful, you know, they're nice, they're inspirational, they give good messages for you to carry with you throughout the day, but instead of necessarily watching them in Pride A, you can watch them with your Pride B, talk about it with your Pride B, which typically is students that you are more comfortable with because you're in a class that you chose to be in, so if you're able to watch those videos in your Pride B, watch them, discuss them, and then go back to whatever your club is about, that is typically, that we think that'll be more helpful than having an entire Pride B one week, an entire Pride A the next week. So we're talking about perhaps watching the Harbor videos in Pride B with students that you already know. And as for the book idea, I know Dr. Ziegler said that he was going to talk to Mrs. Mall about it because he loved the idea, and I think she's going to be very on board with having students be collaborative in what books they want to read and stocking them in the library for them to have.
Can I just ask, did you say Harbor videos?
Yes.
Can you expand on that?
Yeah, so Harbor is, is a brand. They make inspirational videos for students, and, you know, each week it's sort of a different theme. One week, it was about appreciating what you have, and the man tells a story about how he met a homeless person and how he was kinder than anyone else he'd met because he knew how to appreciate what he had, and the next week it was, the one we just watched was about an Olympic athlete and how the challenges she suffered made her the person she is today and how to cope with things like that. So each week they carry a positive message, and the students are able to discuss them with their teachers and their classmates, how they feel about them, what they think about them, and it, it, it gives them a, a positive theme to carry with them through the day, something to think about, make them feel good. They range, some are about five minutes, some are fifteen.
I had one quick question, and it may not be for you guys, maybe for Dr. Ziegler, I saw, and I didn't see him here, as in to the senior paper, so now you really just, you rate a paper, obviously I'm guessing you give it to your English teacher, your ELA teacher, but you don't present it at all?
No, we just, we read the book, write a hundred note cards, write the paper, and give it to the teacher, and the teacher grades it.
Good. Okay, moving on. Oh.
I had just one, really.
Are we good? That's what I, that's the time.
I'm not good, I'm not good.
Okay.
Just a really quick thing, you mentioned that you're having the collaborative breakfast with representatives from other schools. One thing that I would love, if you wouldn't mind, to summarize that in your following report, is particularly the struggles that you feel in this position, because any position of service has its struggles, even if we don't really talk about them, but I want you to talk about them, I want to hear those things. So if you, if you remember that to just kind of summarize, you know, sure it's great to serve and, and all those things, but there are struggles that come with it, and I'd love to hear those. Thanks.
Okay, ready for personnel? Good.
Okay, action items for personnel, 10.1.
Can I make a motion to approve 10.1 to 10.5?
So move, second.
We have a motion in a second. We have a motion, no, we actually have two motions in a second. You guys are challenging me, you're lucky, I can multitask. So we have two motions in a second. On the motion, does anybody have any questions on one through five? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say no. All right.
Moving on to 10.6, Approval of the Collective Bargaining Agreement. Our recommendations as follows, the administration recommends approval of the collective bargaining agreement and addendum between the school board of directors and the Pots Grove School District and the Pots Grove Education Association, PSEA and NEA, professional employees, over the time period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th of 2022. Also included is an early retirement incentive memorandum of understanding, which will expire June 30th, 2019. All are subject to solicitor and administrative approval of the final wording.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Dr. Shurk, would you care to elaborate at all?
I would, actually.
Thank you.
I really would. It really gives me a great pride to have worked through the process with our, our union and their negotiating team, as well as the school board and our negotiating team. The salary and benefit changes that occur over the next three years are an average salary increase of 3.3 percent. We are also adding six dollars, three dollars in each of the first two years to our supplemental coaches and club, club advisors, which will increase their point value from 119 to 125. We've also implemented utilization management program within our prescription to help control costs. We feel like this is a really good benefit to the district as, as healthcare continues to rise on a yearly basis. Some language changes, the district will no longer handle union dues, and we also changed the last payday language to simplify procedures on the last payday of the school year. We've also agreed to reduction in teacher one-hour meetings from 12 to 6, and then outside of the contract, a memorandum of understanding, early in time, retirement incentive of $20,000 put into a 403B for retirees at the end of this, at the end of this particular school year. Stipulations for that, you must have a minimum of 12 professionals, staff members retire for this to go through, and those staff members must have 10 years with the district and 15 years in the PISers. So I just wanted to again thank the board for their reference in this. We feel this is something that is, is good for our faculty, it's good for students because it keeps the ball moving forward for the next three years, and it's also good for our community because if we did take into account what this overall budget would increase for the next three years, and it gives us, really, it gives us an opportunity to manage that in the next three years, knowing what our fixed cost will be for benefits and salary.
The one thing I did want to say was, I want to thank wholeheartedly all of the teacher representatives, the administrative representatives, the school board representatives that actually worked very hard to come to this agreement and everything like that. It's not only going to keep the morale of our teachers and our staff even as high as it is and even maybe hopefully even higher, it's also going to make us, over the next three years, even more competitive in bringing our younger teachers in. As we create the new step program, when we're eliminating a couple of steps, we're going to be able to bring in even more teachers and be more competitive with our surrounding school districts who are paying at a much higher premium and a much higher rate than we are right now, but I want to make sure everybody, thank you very much for all the work everybody has done.
I've worked with educators across the state. I can say with some expertise that ours are the best that anyone could ask for. Teachers are some of the few people we as parents entrust our children to, the impact that they have, the difference that they make in our children's lives. Few could argue that they deserve more than we can ever repay them. No amount of financial compensation could ever really cover what they deserve. However, we as elected officials are also tasked with representing the taxpayers, and as such, I cannot vote for a contract that includes raises for many of our staff over 6, 7, and 8 percent a year. So I'll be voting no.
Anybody else? Okay, counterpoint. I also would like to thank our staff and our teachers who have negotiated this in good faith, that we were, you know, when you start to come up against the end of a contract, people start to get nervous. What's, what's going to be the attitude, what's going to be the outcome of how this is going to go? And if there is enough trust, if there is enough faith, one or both sides will explore an early bird, and that happened in this case, and we had an opportunity to resolve a new contract, we were originally thinking about two years, that would address, we've got a good situation going on right now, we've got good relationships with our staff amongst the administration, with the board, yes, there are friction points, yes, there are points of disagreement, but things are generally moving in the right direction. We generally are starting to really trust each other and you start to get a lot of synergy when that goes on. It was the interest of the board that we continue that and build on it. So we agreed under certain conditions, basically, we, we talked with the administration, let them know what our, what our thoughts were, both sides presented their deals, both sides talked, and we were very quickly, very, in my opinion, very quickly, it may have taken some time back and forth, but very quickly agreed to a deal that we feel is mutually beneficial. We understand that other people can have different points of view on this. When you go to an early bird, you're not going to get everything you want, you're never going to get everything you want, but you trade things. We recognize that our staff accepted pay freezes when the economy was in a very tough situation, and they accepted those without, well, without, with very little complaint. They worked with us because they understood the situation that we were in and our fellow taxpayers were in and our citizens were in. Our memories are long too, and we appreciated it. So we're here tonight basically with this, with this agreement, and we're very happy, we're very happy to be able to vote for it, and we'll be happy to explain to anybody for as long as you're willing to listen, all of the many details of the, it's been encapsulated here very well, we've taken care of some inequities in the, in the steps, we'd like to get, we'd like to address more, as Mr. Parker alluded to, we'd like to make them a little bit evener for the, the younger teachers, but that'll come again in another time. We do things incrementally and we build on success, you know, and so that's where we are, and in a moment, we're going to vote on this, and I hope, I hope we have a favorable outcome. I think, I think I'm pretty confident in this one. So does anybody else care to say anything? This is your turn. No, okay, all right, then, if nobody else has any comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Very good. Congratulations to everyone.
Action items, 11.1, Tuition Agreement. We ask the board to approve the tuition agreement between the Upper Perkyum and School District for the education of one student for the remainder of the 1819 school year.
We have a motion in a second to approve the tuition agreement as presented. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I had one question in regards to the premium or price we're paying, $31,000 for a public school, if this was like a special school, can you go maybe a little bit more elaborate as in to, if possible, because I know this is a particular issue, as in to why it's $31,000 we're paying to a, again, a public school?
It's, it's a small special education class, it costs a lot of support services in the class, and this is the per, per, per diem cost per student for that class.
Okay, are there any other questions on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Sort without objection.
11.2, Property Tax Resolution. We're asking the board to adopt the resolution limiting the district's increase in property tax for the 2018-19 school year to the district adjusted index, that index is 3.0.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Sort without objection.
Settlement Agreement, 11.3. We ask the board to approve and recommend, and we recommend the authorization of a confidential settlement agreement for one student.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Does anybody have any questions on this one? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Sort without objection.
11.4, Middle School Project Change Order Number Two. We're asking the board to approve a change order number two for weatherproofing technologies incorporated in the amount of $155,937.78 for the replacement of the pedestrian bridge at the middle school.
Could you go ahead, could you go ahead and read the next one?
Be glad to. 11.5, Middle School Project Change Order Number Three. We're asking the board to approve a credit change order number three to weatherproofing techn, weatherproofing technologies in the amount of $34,110.84 for the elimination of the original work specified on the pedestrian bridge at the middle school.
We're doing both.
Yes, please.
Seven.
We have a motion in a second to approve 11.4 and 11.5, which is a change order and a change order credit for work at the middle school associated with pedestrian bridge. Are there any questions on this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Sort without objection.
11.6, Budget Transfers for November and December. We're asking the board to approve transfers for November and December 2018 as presented.
So move, second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions on this item? No? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Sort without objection. Here's those conferences.
Yes. Action Items for Education, 12.1, Conference Attendance, PA State Athletic Directors Annual Conference. We ask the board to approve the conference attendance as submitted.
Motion to approve 12.1 to 12.3.
We have a motion in a second to approve 12.1 to 12.3, which are all the conferences. Does anybody have any questions on these three?
Yeah, just one question as in to regards to the data. The person we're sending, why are we not sending a director for, if it's, if it's like data, as in to like the ESSA and stuff like that? As into like the EESA and stuff like that?
I don't, I'm sorry. I just don't, I don't know who Mrs. Oxenford is.
Mrs. Oxenford works out of the business office. She is our child accounting specialist in the district. And a lot of the reports are managed through, via child accounting and our PIMS reporting personnel.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Sort without objection.
Action items for policy. We ask the board to approve the policies as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions on this item?
Yeah, I do actually have some issues with the policy on the meetings. I do have a couple of questions. Okay, first question. All right, I can understand why you guys changed from plurality to majority. That's fine and dandy. That's just wording things. But what I don't understand is the changes after that. You made changes to here to says that it'll have to be unanimous consensus, consent of all remaining board members and blah, 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 blah. So it's unanimous decision to appoint a board secretary? I don't understand that one. Page, what is this? Page three of nine. It says, "Appoint a board secretary, a former school director who has resigned before the expiration of the term in which the director was elected." Must be a unanimous decision. I don't understand why.
That was from the state, came down from the state. That wasn't something we chose to.
Most of the changes in this policy came from legal at PSBA due to changes in some legislation, I would assume. And a lot of it has to do with making sure that we aren't exposed for some sort of legal action on various items. That's usually the benchmark they make. I'm not an attorney on this, but these all came from PSBA and were approved from PSBA.
Okay, I'm going to guess this answers my next question as into, it makes very little sense to me. Again, if it's a law, it's a law. As into, if someone is not at the meeting, it becomes, instead of a majority vote, it becomes a two-thirds vote. So right now, technically, Mrs. Grimm isn't here. So once we approve this, going forward, it's not a majority vote anymore. It's a two-thirds vote on all things. I don't understand that.
You're correct. That's also from the state. That wasn't one of those things we just, we created. That came from PSBA.
It says, "The following actions require recorded affirmation votes of two-thirds of those voting in the presence of a quorum or majority of the full board members." So in essence, we get two-thirds. Now, let's say you have two people. If you have one person missing, you have eight people here, now you have to have six votes to approve pretty much anything. I mean, just to, I mean, planning instruction, establishing department, expending, just anything we spend funds, it's a six vote now. If you had five people, you'd have to have, I guess, four. You know, because I don't understand why it would increase the votes. That's, I just don't, I didn't understand it.
I was just going to say that two-thirds of, you know, nine, you get the six votes. And when you get, so what they're doing is maintaining.
Right now, it's five.
No, no, I'm saying two-thirds of nine, you get six votes.
Oh, okay.
And then what I'm saying is when you go down to, you know, right now, we have five. When you go to eight, two-thirds is actually five and something, so five people.
No. You can't say five point two is five people. Five point two is six people.
Well, actually, it might be a question this time. I don't know if they.
I mean, I can't say, there's no way. No person in the world is going to sit there and say that if it needs to be five point two votes to approve something, five votes is good enough. That means six.
I can, I can take a stab at the logic. I'm not saying I agree with it. But I believe when you have less people voting on important issues, they want to raise the rigor of how many people are going to vote for that. So if you've got fewer than your full allotment of board members, my take on this and my assumption is that they're raising the bar as far as how many people need to vote for it. So if you start getting down to six, you've got less of a viable board at that point. So you've got to get more people to vote yes for it. That's just logically kind of my take on, on that.
And I can understand that, but they don't even do that to vote for the president, though. The president's just a majority now. So we've never, I don't think in the entire time I've been here, we've never had a full board.
Yeah, I would suggest.
The most important vote we have.
I'm concerned about the language. And I'd suggest we get an explanation from PSBA to make sure we're understanding it correctly. Because the school, this is sort of, I'm not sure I'm reading it right, but if Al's right, this sort of overrides the school code. I mean, I understand the point you're making, Bob, that if you only have five people here or six people, you want a, you want more than a three-two vote to act as support. But that's the vagaries of not having people come to a board meeting. That's the price you pay, as you will. And remember, section 508 of the school code does require five votes in many significant cases. So if we were down to six, you know, two-thirds wouldn't be enough by school code. So unless there's some urgency to this, I'd suggest we table it and try to get a better explanation, because I can't give you one frankly.
I'd like to make a motion to table just this particular policy of meeting.
Sorry, I had a little trouble catching up with you. You were gone, you were ahead of me.
The trick, I always tell you, as you will, not the trick, but there's no debate on motion table.
Right, okay. All those in favor, table the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Sort without objection.
Committee appointments.
Miss Ling. We saw the vote, we saw the vote on the gift. That's the second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you killed the whole thing. No, I just killed.
So we're going to go back and we're going to ask the board to approve policy 702 as presented. Action items miscellaneous. This is a, I'm going to turn it over, Mr. Ling, as far as the committee, school board president, recommended actions. Thanks much.
All right. We did this recently, so we're not going to make a lot of changes. We are going to make one addition to the Curriculum Integration and Technology Committee, and that's going to be to add our vice president, Mr. Leach, to that committee. We're going to keep the other committees as they are. We're going to ask that, and I will, you know, we have 14-2 coming up. But I guess we're just going to do those first, right? I'll just walk through them. The MCIU legislative liaison, that was one that I took and I'm still doing that one. We're going to see, I think we got a volunteer, Mr. Niffert, to be the MCIU representative. He's a representative to the actual MCIU board, and I'm doing the legislative, just the legislative subcommittee. And Mrs. Grimm has asked to be the PSBA liaison. So at this time, those are the ones I'm comfortable doing, so it's 14-1, 14-2. And 14-3, I have yet to decide on, so we're not going to do that one at all. You okay? Do you keep up with that? Yes, for now. Got that? Okay. If anybody would care to make a motion to agree to those. Very good. We have a second?
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So those are the changes for the committees for now. Does anybody have any questions, comments, worries, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Very good, thanks very much. Yeah, if you would do.
Sure. I'd like to give a brief report regarding the Joint Operating Committee at our Western Center. We had our meeting last evening. And just some of the highlights of that meeting. Mr. Whartson talked about different student competitions that are coming up in the spring. And also, he talked about recruitment when it came to job, jobs for students to go out on co-op. In March, he'll be presenting a budget to our board for the 1920 school year. And they're in the process of organizing their summer camps at the Western Center at this time. We've off, he's also talked about potential program extensions for 2020 in manufacturing and welding. And there were some new equipment in that, those particular areas that arrived, and his teachers and students are excited about that. So that was our topics for discussion last night at the Western Center.
I'm sorry, I thought there was one other.
I was going to say the same thing.
Well, I don't.
Okay, fair enough. Last night, we had the opportunity to appoint a new superintendent of record, and we did take advantage of that. And Dr. Shirk is the new superintendent of record for the next two years down at the John. So thanks very, congratulations, and thank you for accepting.
Okay, as we move forward, we're going to look at committee items. We're asking the board, 16.1, to accept the minutes of operations and facilities that was held November 13th, 2018, as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion to combine all committee items, they're all minutes. We have a motion and a second to approve 61 through 64, all the minutes from the various committees for the past month. Anybody have any questions on any of the minutes for any of the committees? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, very good. It's no order without objection. So now, new business. This is the fun part. So how many, I'm going to limit you to three tonight.
I already have one.
Three.
So I'll pass them till the next meeting.
All right.
What I, what I would like to do tonight is give Dr. Harney an opportunity to, to talk to the board regarding Act 44. And regarding Act 44, there's a new program that the state, state is having us implement, which he and his team have worked diligently on since school started. I think it's important that the board understand the work that has gone into Act 44, as well as this new Safe to Say program. So Dr. Harney?
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. As Dr. Shirk mentioned, one of the major components of Act 44 is the implementation of something called the Safe to Say program, which is a program that is under various names throughout the country. It came out of the Sandy Hook group. Obviously, we know the tragedy that took place at Sandy Hook. And it's a program that is an anonymous reporting system that utilizes a website, an app, and a phone number. There'll be a phone number, they find that's the least used in this day and age, for anonymous reporting of unsafe and concerning situations for students, their parents, and the community. So what is taking place on the 14th of January, this reporting system is going to go live. Prior to it going live, there's been a lot of backwork, and I'll take a few minutes to talk about that. But it sounds a little illogical, but we're not really going to be promoting any of this with our students until a week or two after it's up. They didn't want anything to go out, no advertising, really no, no posters, no specific sites for anybody to report to until they were ready to get this thing up and running. And it's been kind of a quick transition. The state legislator, legislation last summer, kind of picked this date as January 14th, kind of an arbitrary date. And school districts, along with us, have been kind of running to catch up. I think we're in really good shape. What we're doing is, part of the legislation is you need to have a five-to-three-person team who's going to be responsible for triaging and, and taking care of all of these situations that come to the school district. So that team, we have a four-person team. I am the lead of that team. I've also enlisted, Dr. Ramage is kind of a co-lead to help me. And then we have Dr. Ziegler and Mr. Boyer also as part of the team, because data has shown that it's mostly, these are going to be coming from the high school and the middle school. So that's, that's our team. When a, when a report comes in, it comes in to all of us, and we have to act. There'll be more information, and I can get some more information out to you about the various levels of reports that come in, how it's triaged. It actually goes to the Attorney General's Office first, and they make a decision on what type of incident it is, whether it's immediate life-threatening or serious in another matter. And if it's immediate life-threatening, we get an instant call, as do our police. So we're working with our three police departments around this topic. I'm also in touch with the radio room in Montgomery County. And so you are aware, we are going to be, we went through training, our team went through training on December 14th. We actually just did another webinar yesterday. And our students are going to be trained by the 25th of January. So once that's done, there'll be more promotions around that for the kids to understand how to use the system, the look fours, all those types of things, and how that they can, they can positively impact the community by looking out for one another and our community at the same time. So there'll be more information coming out about that, but we wanted to kind of get ahead of it for you, because you'll start to hear about it. As I said, it goes live on the 14th, but no one's allowed to do anything really until after it's, it's live. So it's, it feels kind of awkward at this point. And so we're scheduling our training as fast as we could after that date to get up and running with it. So we'll keep you posted. We anticipate the most of, of the reports to come in at the very beginning of the process, because it's going to be a new process for, for folks, and that data bears that out. But we'll keep you posted on, on where we are. And Dr. Shirk has talked about the many prongs that we have in our safety program, and this is just yet another one. There's actually been some pushback around the state. We've been getting letters from school districts that are wanting to opt out of it. Some school districts already have their own version or a smaller version of this. But we're happy to be involved, and I think, you know, if it can, if it can cause one positive outcome or save one life, I think we've done a good job with the program. So we will keep you updated.
Thoughts on why some school districts have asked to opt out?
It's a lot of work. It's a lot. And a lot of districts throughout the state aren't, I mean, there's, some are so small and so strapped from an administrative and professional staff standpoint that it's going to be a very difficult task for them to manage, probably. Also, some are opting, want to opt out because they've had their own systems in place for a little while, and they're finding, they think there's going to be a conflict. But there's really no way to opt out. It's in the law, and we all have to abide by it, so.
I just wanted to say two things. The first thing, this is my fourth year coming to West and receiving all of the awesome cards and such like that. And I've saved each and every one of them over all four years. And I can't say thank you enough to the teachers and the students that actually do this. I mean, the word says, "You rock." It's not, we, I do this as a privilege and an honor to sit here. It doesn't matter to me. My kids, I mean, my kids already went through the program. And I thank the district as much as I can for helping them get to where they are at the present time. It shouldn't say, you know, "You rock." The "you rock" really should be for the students. The students rock, and the teachers rock. On the second side, I know we say steam, or it's steam, yeah, steaming all the time and such like that. And I understand how the, the catchphrase and everything wants to go. And my family as a whole, they're in steam. Their careers are all in steam as well. I do wish we would also highlight the trades. I do think the trades are an admirable profession for many individuals. I think we should be showing that it's not a negative if you're going to go to the community, the community colleges, or you're going to be going into a trade or anything like that. I really think that there is, as a, as a future, I would like to see more students going into trade than worrying about the catchphrases of steam and such. I just think that is something we really need to concentrate on in the future.
I'm going to have to respond to that. I agree with everything you said about West. We're on board. But as far as steam goes, obviously, science includes not only the professionals, but also lots of people who support scientists, who may or may not be considered degree professionals. We do have quite a few people who are in medical services programs over at the Western Votech, who would also be considered scientists, doing some of the work that they do in the laboratories and.
laboratories and everything else. Obviously, the arts, there's quite a few famous artists who never went to college and maybe it's not a trade, but there's a lot of skill that goes involved, especially the guys that do the sculpture art and welding art and all those sorts of things. Let's see, science, technology, drafting over there, the drafting program and some of the other programs they've got. I will tell you, it takes a lot of technology when we talk about the auto repair and all of those things. So I agree with you, but bigger point, steam is all-inclusive. It's all-inclusive. So it's part of everything, can touch everything. You don't have to go to college to be in steam. You don't have to be, you know, a professional or have a credential. It's something that's available for everybody and improves everybody's life. So that's my plug for steam. And the Votech. Any other new business? You said only one. All right, then, that brings us to public comment. Does anybody have anything else they would like to add based on anything that was new on the agenda or anything that we talked about? If not, I'm ready for that big motion. Motion adjourned. Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.